Good evening, residents of Everett, Washington. I'd like to welcome you to the Everett City Council meeting for May 7th, 2025. For information on council meetings and how to participate, please visit everettwa/citycouncil. We have a big crowd tonight, which is fantastic. So we ask that everyone kind of respect different points of view and we'll, and we want to give opportunities for everyone to speak. So just be patient, we'll get through and we appreciate your participation. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor Franklin?
Here.
Vice President Zaralengo?
Here.
Councilmember Fosse?
Here.
Councilmember Bader?
Here.
Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
Councilmember Vogli?
Here.
Councilmember Tui?
Here.
President Schwab?
Here. And at this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Bader to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
...to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Fosse to read the land acknowledgement.
The city council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Jehob's people and their successors, the Talaylub tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you very much. Okay, on to our agenda. There has been a move, remove item number six from the consent items, and it will be put under proposed action items. I should say, yeah, we'll put it under action item, thank you. Yeah. All right. So under Old Business, do I hear motion to approve the minutes for April 30th, 2025?
Councilwoman Ryan, some moves.
Second.
Motion and second, someone made, clerk, please take the roll.
Vice President Zaralengo?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Well, good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, President Schwab, council and community. Got a few comments this evening. First thing, tonight on the agenda, we have our first reading and briefing on an ordinance expanding the use of apprenticeships in our city. Apprenticeships, as we hopefully all know, are the right thing to do and grow our community, the workers of the future for our city. And really appreciate your consideration of this ordinance and implementing it. Next, I'd like to address some questions that have been circulating regarding the legislation passed in Olympia, allowing a merger between Everett Transit and Community Transit. To be clear, the city of Everett is not actively considering a merger with Community Transit. My administration in this council are focused on other more urgent priorities, specifically actions that could save general fund dollars and create long-term sustainable revenue for our city. We did not ask for this legislation, nor did we advocate for it, and I'm not recommending this tool be used at this time. And as far as I know, I haven't heard of any interest from our council to pursue this merger. While this new legislation does give cities an additional option to consider in the future, it's not aligned with our current priorities and it's not something that we're looking, looking to act on. Next, I want to share a little bit about a recent opportunity I had to represent Everett as one of 12 mayors selected to participate in the Mayor's Innovation Project Pedestrian Safety Cohort. I got to travel to Washington DC fully funded and it allowed us to engage deeply on a number of issues, including pedestrian bicycle safety, which ties directly into our broader public safety strategy here in Everett. You know, we often talk about gun violence and gang violence, and rightly so, but pedestrian safety is another key part of how we build a safe community for everyone. I have a few more meetings with the cohort, both mainly remote, I think one more in person, but was excited to come away with a lot of new ideas and tools that I'll be looking forward to bringing to our teams as we implement our Vision Zero Plan for Everett. Next, I want to acknowledge the recent concerns around the potential delays in the Edgewater Bridge replacement project. I understand and truly share the community's frustration. The current detour is long, inconvenient and has a significant impact on our quality of life, our daily lives. Replacing the 79-year-old bridge is an enormous undertaking. It's a complex engineering and construction challenge, and it's a top priority for our team because it must, and it must be completed quickly and safely. We cannot risk having any part of our community separated in case of an earthquake or disaster, so safety is always our number one concern. I've directed our Public Works Director to closely monitor this project and explore every option to expedite the timeline. Our team is meeting weekly with the contractor Granite Construction to troubleshoot, find efficiencies and make sure we're doing everything possible to deliver this critical project faster than the current estimates. We will continue to keep the community well-informed and continue to push forward with urgency and determination. And I wanted to invite Director Ryan Sasse and City Engineer Tom Hood forward just to share a tiny bit more about the project.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council members. We hear and we share the community's pain and frustration regarding the having to extend the closure of the Mculteau Boulevard for the bridge replacement. We recognize that the closure is inconvenient. It's a long and difficult detour and it has, it's a significant hardship for members of our community. I will ensure that Public Works Project and Construction Management Team explore all feasible contract options for scheduled recovery and consolidation of activities to try to minimize the amount of additional closure time. With that, I'd like to have City Engineer Tom Hood, who is with me here tonight, provide you with a brief update on a brief summary of the issues that we've encountered and the status of the current work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Good evening, council members and Mayor Franklin, Tom Hood, Public Works. To help understand the nature of the schedule impacts that we're facing, I think a bit of discussion is warranted about what we refer to as the temporary work platform for this project. Essentially, the new bridge footprint will sit within the existing bridge footprint because you have to connect one side of the road to the other, obviously. And so we need a temporary platform across the ravine to support cranes and other equipment that'll be needed, both to demolish the existing bridge, but also to construct the new bridge. So this platform is supported by dozens of steel pile that are drilled into the ravine below and to quite a deep depth to hit good soil to bear on. Unfortunately, we have encountered many unknown obstructions in the ravine as we've attempted to drill these piles. These obstructions are primarily timber and concrete, large pieces of timber and concrete. They possibly could have been a result of construction methods used to build the existing bridge in 1946 that were never removed and eventually buried. Maybe they were from a bridge even previous to that. What we do know is that those obstructions were not found in our geotechnical investigation for the project, nor were they seen on any records of the existing 1946 bridge. So we truly did not know that they were there until we started drilling and ran into them. So these obstructions, as you can imagine, have added time and complexity to the construction of that work platform that we need. And removing the obstructions to get the piles in has also further destabilized the already steep slopes in the ravine, which have compounded our efforts to get these piles in. To echo the mayor's and Ryan's comments, I personally also sympathize with the impact to our community that this project has. It is very disruptive, it's a long closure, it's a long process. Unfortunately, when you have construction of this magnitude that includes underground work, it's not uncommon to find these obstructions that can cause delays. On a positive note, all of the piles for the work platform have now been installed. And so that brings us to a great milestone that we can start moving forward with demolition of the existing bridge. And in addition to that, begin now looking at options for recovering that schedule. My staff and I are going to work closely with the contractor to identify possible consolidations of tasks and feasibility of accelerating the remaining schedule, looking for portions of work that can be either accelerated under possible overtime or parallel tasks that can be consolidated, things like that. So we'll leave no rock unturned in our quest to get this project done. And I'll certainly provide more information when it becomes available as to how the schedule is shaking out. So happy to take any questions if you'd like, or I'll pass it back to Mayor Franklin.
Thank you. Looks like there's a question.
Councilman Tui?
Thank you for, thank you for that update. I know it's very complicated and you probably don't know what effect this complication that you just had will have on the budget, whether, because it obviously wasn't planned for. So when you know that, you can just brief us on that?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just a comment too, we have the website resource for those who are interested in monitoring the project.
Right.
It would be fantastic if what you just presented would be made available on that website. Good job, thank you.
Will do.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the work to follow up and keep us really informed and keep the community informed and try to make up time and other aspects of the project, appreciate it. Thank you. I have just one more thing, sorry for my long comments this evening, but it is Bike Everywhere Month. And I have a proclamation to read. So, "The city of Everett celebrates the freedom, joy and well-being that bicycling offers. And throughout the month of May, residents and visitors alike can participate in a variety of local biking events and simply head outside to enjoy a solo ride. And bicycling promotes health and quality of life and economic vitality by reducing pollution congestion, supporting local businesses and drawing tourism into Everett. And local business, organizations, businesses and civic groups, together with the League of American Bicyclists, will enjoy in promoting cycling as a safe, sustainable and year-round form of transportation and recreation. And these efforts will enhance public awareness of bike safety and education, contributing to safer streets and healthier communities. Now, therefore, I, Cassie Franklin, Mayor of the city of Everett, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Bike Month. And I would love to present this proclamation to Brock Howell and I think some of our team members are here tonight, so thank you so much." Thank you so much, Brock. And yeah, just lastly, you want to share how heartbroken we are at the tragic loss of the 13-year-old child this last week. And I just ask that our community keep the child's loved ones and the entire community of Explorer Middle School in your thoughts as they grieve. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, now it's time for public comments, which includes written comment acknowledgement. Under our rules, written comments shall be considered same as oral comments. Persons submitting comments must provide their name and city of residence to may be part of the official council record. So, hi Angie, how many, how many do we have here in the room to speak tonight?
Good evening, President Schwab, I haven't counted just yet.
Okay. So I would ask everyone to try to, rule is to stick to three minutes. We appreciate it, but we want to get everybody through and, and so, yeah. So go ahead, we should start with the written comment acknowledgement.
So we received one written comment from Jose Villalas regarding Andy's place and Compass Health, and that was provided to council, legal, city clerk and administration to be part of the record. And we do have four people on Zoom for public comments, so we'll start with those individuals. And I'm going to have Annie start in just a moment.
Okay, can you hear me?
Hi Annie, yes.
Hi.
I'm just going to give you the brief instructions. We need you to state your full name, city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak. If you do have video, you can turn that on, but if not, it's okay. And you can start whenever you're ready.
So my name is Annie Lalone and I live in Everett, Washington. And I'm in this meeting because I'm opposing having, I think it's the UR4, the zoning, turning houses into condominiums or apartment complexes and that. That's, that's why I'm joining this meeting. And I don't have any comments quite yet because I'm not sure what's going on, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we'll go to Joe. And Joe, if you could turn on your video and state your full name, city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Okay, um, hang on, I gotta turn on my light. Sorry, I'm not feeling that well. I'm Joe Kuntler here. I'm gonna make this brief because I got a cold, but I appreciate Mayor Franklin's statements about the proposed legislation on Everett Transit. As you all know, I'm a regular transit writer and I generally support the idea of Everett Transit being part of a larger system or at least getting 0.9, if not 1.2, sales tax to meet the future demands on the Everett Transit system. What I don't support is that kind of a decision made without a plebiscite referendum or initiative. We have found in these kind of, in my transit activism, going back to 1999, that when there is not a public vote placed before the voters, that there is a backlash election and sometimes that goes very bad. Stable funding for transit is what's best. Having ups and downs, peaks and valleys and chaos is not helpful. And I will also add that, you know, this idea of one public meeting working out. I would hope that Everett makes clear that it asks Governor Ferguson to veto. Why did I veto that? There's also, I also will say very delicately that I don't feel terribly safe in community transit. They're very corporate, you can't walk up to the board. There's other issues, some of them around employees, so I will not use YouTube to solve them. But what I will say is, I really hope this agency, Everett Transit, will be well taken care of. Its employees are top-notch and for that matter, the operators and maintainers and security personnel of Community Transit are also top-notch, as well as the CEO, Rick Allen, for this. Moving along, I want to conclude at this spot. I am deeply grateful for Liz Vogli's years of public service and commitment and passion for transit. We have had, you know, and I understand she'll be happily retiring. And I just wanted to say thank you from my bed. I'm sorry I'm not feeling that well tonight, but I'll be on the bed in time for Red Middle Lake this Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Feel better. Next, we're going to go to Lori, just one moment. Lori, can you hear me?
Good evening.
Hi Lori. Could you state your full name and city of residence? And you have three minutes to speak. And if you have video, please turn that on too.
My name is Lori McMillan and my husband Ian and I reside in the North Everett community, which is being voted for rezoning. And Ian and I have lived here for 27 years at our president address on Sixth Street and Waverly. And I was just appalled to find out that this neighborhood that is very close-knit, small in proximity, the houses are very close to each other. Our streets have an immense amount of cars parked on the side of the street now because we've recently had a closure on 10th and Tower. That said, I drive this neighborhood, even though I'm retired, I work part-time. And there are times in this neighborhood that I'm not even able to park my car. Although we have a driveway that allows for additional cars, I, at any time, I can step out in front of my yard and find cars parked from the local community college. During the time of the 529 closure, this neighborhood, for a period of three months, literally, it would take me anywhere between 45 minutes to an hour and a half to drive from Broadway into my neighborhood. It, it, I don't, I don't even know what to say about that. It was just beyond me how this could happen in such a small neighborhood. But people know our neighborhood very well. We're not a high-end neighborhood, but the individuals who live within and reside within this community support each other. We have a, I believe it's on Fifth and Skyline. There is a home that was recently built on that property. And the other day, I stopped by and spoke to this gentleman and he said to me, "Do you live in the neighborhood?" And I said, "No, I'm just visiting." And I said, "What are you constructing?" And he said, "Well, we're just waiting for the city of Everett to give us the okay to increase this property with multi-housing." And those were his exact words. So my question to the council is, is one that if this property has already been designed for rezoning, then what is the purpose of even having this showpiece to ask and to hear information regarding how the neighbors feel about this? So I, I would present this. If rezoning is something that's already been established by the city council, I would say, "Let's start first in your neighborhoods and then let us know how the rezoning is affecting your local neighborhoods. And if it's positive, then I say, 'Let's do it here for our small community.' But first, let's start in the council's neighborhoods." That's my statement.
Thank you. And our next individual online is Steve. And if you have video, please turn that on and state your full name and city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak. Steve, are you there? You're muted.
I am unmuted.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, what, this is a neighborhood, all rambler's types home, and it is a few neighborhoods. And if we start building up to four stories, a lot of people are gonna lose their view and a lot of people are gonna lose their value. And the problem with that is they take from us, who have been here, and give it to themselves with a taller view. We just don't think that's fair, it's not right. Not to mention, it gets busy enough up here on Skyline, where we just don't need that many more cars. And my wife would like to add something.
So I'm Jane McKenzie and my thoughts are ditto what other people are saying about this rezoning, but also if you're really interested in increasing housing in Everett, why don't you look at the blocks of homes that have been sat empty for, I don't even know, 15, 20 years off of 12th Street, between like Fur, Cedar, Hamlock, whatever those wood names, I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, but there's blocks and blocks of abandoned homes that could easily be built up if you need more housing.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we'll move to those in chambers. And we'll start with Timothy, followed by Joe. And Timothy, if you could come to the podium. And if you could, please press the red button on the mic stand and just leave that on, yep. And then state your full name, city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, council members, Mayor. My name's Timothy Chipman. I'm a resident of Everett, Washington, here in Port Gardner. I come here tonight to thank the council members and anyone else for taking the time for my personal grievances related to the Compass Health building on Broadway Avenue. Although things aren't changed, I have not given up the hope of some type of oversight committee to curb the escalation of even more problems with a bigger Compass building opening on Broadway very shortly. I know that hospitals, Swedish, churches, schools, so many more that I can't even have the time here to say, they, they have at least a heavy HR for communities. Maybe to curb the exterior issues in the neighborhood, and there are so many here in Port Gardner, about an oversight committee or a neighborhood outreach committee, committee, to quit wasting the time and revenue by coming to city council with grievances. The time, the effort, all the while, and the minimal efforts are being afforded, as in my case. When issues are spoken of behind closed doors, they tend to stay there. Things get lost in translation. Here I am. An oversight committee or community outreach committee would deal with exterior issues as far as residents are concerned and throughout our whole community here in Port Gardner. would deal with exterior issues as far as residents are concerned and throughout our whole community here in Port Gardner. How can we feel safe or have peace of mind in our own homes, knowing that our community is not going to go through such a long process of recovery? With getting answers or anything done for viable issues? We can't. Times are not getting better. Compass has held a community at bay. Andy's Place Compass Property has never held anyone accountable, fifty four deaths in the building. Things are buried, not talked about daily. In fact, another death um the day before yesterday at another one of the compass facilities, Haven House. These are residential buildings. Security guards that are hired are not capable of their jobs. They're kids. There's no security guard card that they have. They've been, never been to a class. Sure, drugs have calmed down on the open streets. Now they're on the inside. Summer's coming. A new compass with programs equals a recipe, recipe for, for disaster. For an already ravaged neighborhood, right by the bus station. They will come and come, so many. For what? Lack of care? What a disappointment for Behavioral Health Corporation. That only gets richer if things get worse.
If you could finish up, that'd be great.
Andy's Place never had a program, A A N A, any self-help counseling, four years, no programs. I lived there. Just a place to live with no other help. And although grateful.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, appreciate it.
That's fine, thank you.
Next, Joe, if you could please come to the podium, followed by Mark. If you could please press the mic button there, and yeah, and state your full name and city of residence, you have three minutes to speak.
Okay, thank you for consideration for letting me speak. Uh, my name is Joe Newland. I reside in North Everett on Skyline and Midora. I have resided in the neighborhood for thirty years. I purchased my home as my forever home. I have remodeled and updated as time has gone on. I'm not the only resident that has purchased a home in this neighborhood with the same intention. We have invested in our homes and in our neighborhood. I've discovered the city of Everett intends to move forward with their proposed change in zoning from R one to U R four. The neighborhood that I'm talking about is bordered on by North Broadway, Marine View Drive, Legion Golf Course. We are a small family neighborhood comprised of Legion Park and Mount Baker View additions, which were initially stepped, established in nineteen forty five, nineteen forty six as a single family residential neighborhood, which it still remains today. City of Everett has not taken appropriate steps or time to notify the entire neighborhood prior to proposing such a radical zoning change. A lot of the neighbors are not on the list served for the city council or the Everett twenty forty four website. The few articles in the Herald have not addressed zoning changes other than to indicate that zoning would not affect the neighborhoods that border on Woods, ours is Legion Golf Course. Or limited exits. I believe that only two exits would qualify, even though the article mentions one exit. After doing additional research, I returned to compare current zoning districts, proposed sliding map, related to current zoning, proposed zoning. When reviewing the map, the current and proposed zoning, I discovered that the neighborhood areas that were previously zoned R two, two A have now been proposed to change to N R, which used to include our four, R one zoning, which was our previous designation. The city's proposed changes make impact of their proposed changes far more questionable. There's more behind this than just proposing the change to our neighboring, neighborhood zoning. It has more to do with meeting state regulations and by taking away density from some neighborhoods. They need to make changes in others to meet the density requirements of the state. Our neighborhood does not support the proposed zoning. We are constrained without easy access in or out of the neighborhood. We have only two exits entrances to our neighborhood, and often we find we are closed due to traffic on North Broadway, Marine View Drive. Highway five twenty nine interstate five. We have experienced and do continue to experience extreme traffic hazards due to the limited access in and out of our neighborhood. Further, limited access creates a hazard for emergency vehicles twenty four seven. Based on the zoning proposal only, proposing a zoning change from R one to U R four is not feasible or appropriate. Our neighborhood has limited access. The proper zoning change would be N R C, Neighborhood Residential Constrained. Further, we are locked in by Legion Golf Course. We have slopes steeper than twenty five percent in special soils handling associated with the Everett smelter site. This is our neighborhood. My home was built in nineteen sixty three. Our neighborhood has been a neighborhood of small family homes since nineteen forty five, nineteen forty six. Changing our neighborhood zoning from R one to U four is not appropriate or logical. Based on the foregoing, the proposed zoning change to our little neighborhood should be N R C. Thank you.
Um, next, Mark, could you please come to the podium, followed by Neil? Mark Simpson. And please state your full name and city of residence. You have three minutes to speak.
Mark Simpson, Everett, Washington. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and comment in person tonight. I live in Legion Park Edition Division Two Platte, near Legion Golf Course. I've heard news recently that the city is considering a rezone from R one to U R four, which would increase traffic and housing density there. I'm firmly against it, and I request the city consider exempting our platte from, from it and the nearby platte, Mount Baker View Edition. I believe it would be uh, uh, cause lower safety in our neighborhood. There would be increased traffic. There's already cars parked on the streets, and that would increase. Uh, it would be tougher for the emergency vehicles to get to our neighborhoods. Our neighborhood is essentially a dead end with only one main access to and from North Broadway, which at times is very congested. And um Skyline Drive is narrow and windy uh coming up from Marine Drive. It's really not meant for heavy traffic. Uh, you usually have to wait for a car to go by because there's a car parked on the street. Uh, please reconsider this effort uh to try to rezone our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Neil, please come to the podium, followed by Laura. Yes. Please state your full name and city of residence. You have three minutes to speak.
Uh, my name is Neil Anderson. I live at twenty seven oh three Fifth Street uh in Everett. And I was um going to talk briefly about the proposed or comprehensive plan change to the U R four designation. I think the previous two speakers have addressed the access points and the access problems very well. So in light that we have a lot of people here and a lot of people want to talk, I was gonna skip over that part because I think the previous two speakers have done a great job explaining the constraints within uh Legion Park Edition, Division Number Two, and the Mount Baker uh View Edition with access constricted by um uh the one access point basically into um uh Legion Park Division Two and a very narrow uh Skyline Drive that runs down to uh Marine View Drive that uh is a, a method of access into the two plattes. What I wanted to talk about then was also that another constraint I feel is uh our properties are in the Department of Ecology, a SARCO smelter cleanup project area. And this work uh still continues today. Uh, right now they are down in the uh Waverly Avenue area. And uh finishing up the cleanup in uh that part of the neighborhood. Uh, contaminated soil was removed from my lot two thousand twelve. But one must remember that contaminated soil still exists in the Legion Park Division Two and Mount Baker View subdivisions. Uh, no soil was removed uh under existing homes, garages, driveways, and walkways. And the cleanup extended downward to a specified depth as determined by the Department of Ecology. In my case, twelve inches of soil was removed in my front yard and eighteen inches uh in my rear yard. And then a heavy duty geotextile fabric was placed at the uh bottom of the soil removal line. So uh basically, everything above the liner uh was kind of cleaned up, but, but nothing was done below the liner. And so that's to kind of prevent people from getting below the liner and getting into the contaminated soil again. Um, so uh the Everett smelter uh contamination issue uh still exists in our neighborhood. And um, I don't know if you have this, but if you'd like to borrow it for copies or something, but uh at the conclusion of the cleanup for my lot, uh I got this little notebook from the DOE. And it's kind of do's and don'ts uh about working or doing projects in your yard. And one of the things it says towards the very end is that uh no matter what they did, there are still pockets of um arsenic uh in the properties down below the liner. So um it's still there. If there's major redevelopment, I think that could be a problem. And I think also, uh you were given a, a copy of a letter and some uh signatures from some of the concerned neighbors. That was basically just one afternoon getting uh people we could get, so.
Thank you. So you could finish up there. Thank you very much.
Laura, please come to the podium, followed by Carl. Okay, so Carl. Please state your full name and city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Yes, my name is Carl Agnew, uh North Everett, same topic. Um, yeah, just, we were kind of surprised to hear that they're wanting to change. Um, part of it is understandable, but like you said, we are a small, established neighborhood, safe. Um, a lot of people know each other. We have a pretty low turnover. Um, we'd try, like to keep it that way. And if they do elect to change, it would be a little more oversight what exactly they propose to do. And there is a little concern about that builder because he just stopped building all of a sudden. So why does he know prior to us knowing, I guess, would be the question. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next, Patty, if you could please come to the podium, followed by Tyler. And state your full name and city of residence. You have three minutes to speak.
Hi, my name's Patty Manning. Good evening, everybody. Um, I live in the North, North Everett neighborhood, the same as the last several speakers. And I'm gonna urge you to vote no on these, what the planning commission is planning. Um, I bought a house twenty seven years ago in my neighborhood. It is an old, single-family neighborhood. One-story houses, I mean, we could go up to two, but one-story houses. And for them to put monstrosities, four-story skinny townhomes, subdividing lots is what they were describing last night in our neighborhood, is ridiculous, outrageous. And basically, it will destroy our single-family neighborhoods. And I would like to ask um any of you, would you like these things in your neighborhood next to your home, blocking out your light? Um, and the other thing that you want, might want to think about, and I grew up in Seattle, I worked for the city of Seattle for thirty years, but I live up here. And what happened down there is gonna happen up here. Basically, what's gonna happen, you got these big developers that come in, and I'm all for making money, okay, but there's a time and a, I mean, excuse me, a place for this sort of development, four-story townhomes, there's four-story whatever, whatever they're supposed to be. Um, and multiple ones on each property. What happened in Seattle, you get all these developers buying up the properties, like if a house goes up for sale, they can outbid every single buyer that wants to buy a house. So right now, we're about six hundred thousand is what our homes are worth up there. Um, they're gonna buy it up, they build these things, they're, they charge a lot more money for them, maybe eight hundred thousand or so. Not even a middle-class person can afford to live in that neighborhood anymore. Our property values will go up, and if we sell, great, but in the meantime, our property taxes are gonna skyrocket. Um, and I just think it's outrageous that this would even be considered for a single-family neighborhood. I don't care even our neighborhood or anybody else's neighborhood. So my suggestions, nu- number one, is if you're gonna ha- and we do have the ADUs. Okay, I'm not all for those, but if we have to keep those, great, but those need, there needs to be some sort of um regulations for like so that monstro- you know, I know of somebody that's gonna build, not, that's, they say they can build nine homes. The city told me can build nine homes on his two lots. Okay, that's across from five oh one Legion. That's where there's one huge home and four ADUs in the front yard. Okay, um, so if you're gonna keep the ADUs, keep the ADUs, but there needs to be something where it limits the size of the ADUs or the story of the ADUs, you know, the, the height. Um, but that's one suggestion. Another suggestion is if you want to build these, and they are, they will be monstrosities, I'm sorry, four levels in a single-family neighborhood will destroy it. There will be no single-family neighborhood anymore. Um, is to maybe in a commercial area, put these homes in a commercial area. Um, maybe a mixed-use area. I mean, if I had wanted to buy in a dense, uber-dense area, I would have done so. And I'm sure that other people feel the same way, but put them in a business area, parking lots, whatnot, um vacant areas.
If you could finish up, that'd be great.
Right, where, right. Okay, I'll finish up, but um vacant areas where it would even beautify it. You'd have homes, you'd have businesses. We also don't have the infrastructure on Broadway. We don't, we just don't have it in our roads and everything. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please vote no on that.
Okay, we're not doing so well in our three minutes now. But thank you for your, for your words. Um, we have more?
Yes. Uh, Tyler, could you please come to the podium, followed by Carpenter? Please state your full name and city of residence. You have three minutes to speak.
Tyler Beckley, Everett, Washington, Port Gardner neighborhood. So this is unrelated to um the zoning stuff, but I live at uh Thirty Fourth and Hoyt. I've owned my house since two thousand fourteen. Uh, it is exhausting dealing with all the problems with the residents and guests that live in the apartment complex next door at thirty three twenty seven Hoyt Avenue have caused me over the past ten years. The constant drug dealing, drug use, drug overdoses that go on in the daily, the prostitution that takes place in our neighborhood has got to stop. I'm also worried about the safety of my household, which includes my young son, my roommate, and myself. There's also constant disturbance from the property. Disturbances from the property, including garbage piled up around the property that bleeds onto my property. Residents playing their car stereos at high volumes at all times, day or night, screeching tires, constant noise pollution. Residents actually jumped onto my roof of my house one evening. Also, the sounds of um gunshots are too close to my home. Um, owner of the property is Ralph Eisenrader. He needs to be held accountable for all crimes that are going on around his property and around the neighborhood, as well as previous and current apartment manager. I think he should also be held responsible as well. I'm asking for guidance on this from the city.
Just a quick question, have you reported these incidents to the police? And, and if so, just make sure you give your information to Jennifer so that we can follow up on some of the clearly illegal activities that you're commenting on.
You know, I've been in touch with many, yeah, many police officers and many uh sergeants and, yeah. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, uh Carpenter.
Uh, yeah, my name's Chuck Carpenter. I live in Glacier View area. I oppose the uh rezoning. Uh, we live in a historic district. It's kind of a, kind of by the new YMCA. So anyway, just uh keep your thoughts about that because it's a really nice area, and we moved there twenty five years ago. We appreciate everything you do for us. Thanks.
Thank you. Bonnie, if you could please come to the podium, and please state your full name and city of residence. You have three minutes to speak.
Um, Bonnie Townsend, eight oh four Waverly. I'm from the North Everett uh neighborhood, the one that borders the Everett Community College and um the um Legion Golf Course. And so I'm here tonight to implore you to reconsider rezoning that neighborhood. You've heard a lot of the reasons already from previous speakers, so I won't reiterate those, but my, I guess my first disappointment is because of the notification that you folks give us when there's major changes like this. Um, the only way that we found out about it was one neighbor going door to door, letting us know that the zoning was coming. Last week, I got a little card from the city saying that there was um a change coming through and to read the comprehensive plan. Have you seen the do- size of that document? And to find out what's going on in there is ridiculous. So you know who we are, you know, have our addresses, you have our tax code because we pay the property taxes. So would you please send us individual notices when we're directly involved with something like this as important as rezoning? I'm from, uh, like I'm saying, I'm from that neighborhood. I bought the house forty years ago. The reason I bought the house was because of the neighborhood. It's a wonderful neighborhood. It's quiet. They're all nineteen fifties ramblers. Large lots, quiet. It's why we bought there. And so for you to come in now and tell us you're gonna rezone it because you need to increase uh housing density is not a good reason for it to come in and affect the neighborhood. Your, your plan doesn't work with where we are because our neighborhood is so tiny. And we have the restricted access, as they stated with Broadway. It's hard enough to get in and out of there. We've had enough problems with that neighborhood, not only with the the soil abatement issues that started back in nineteen ninety five, and every summer we're working with the city trying to resolve all the soil issues. We've got flatbed trucks and dumpsters, nobody coming through, removing soil. Um, replanting uh fences all around the yard. It's not a pleasant place to live anymore, but we're dealing with it because we're trying to It's not a pleasant place to live anymore, but we're dealing with it because we're trying to get through this soil abatement issue. That was an issue. We've had problems all the time there. Um, Everett Community College proposing a three to five-story parking garage. That would have put all of the students parking in that garage filtering through the neighborhood. We fought that. We shut that down. Now we come up with then the student parking we have going on every single day because they, ECC will not enforce parking on ECC property. So they're parking all in front of our homes. We deal with that. So now we find out that we're having the issue with the rezoning, which you folks don't even notify us of. We find out accidentally. It's just unacceptable. So we're frustrated with the way that you handle things. And we want to be able to make sure that you guys understand that the neighborhood is the neighborhood that we want to live in. And with you coming in with the high-density housing, it's not going to work for us. You have property elsewhere. You can put up a million high-rises that'll work perfectly, but do not impact this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we have one more individual, but they wish to wait till we get to item number 10.
Okay, so we're, well spoken. Thank you, everyone. So I'm going to go to council comments and I'm going to go first today since, um, I've, uh, been coordinating, uh, this, this body's, uh, uh, activities when it comes to our comprehensive plan. Um, I would like to just state that really we have four areas as a council that we've been, um, working in. One of them are two overlays and we've had some meetings. Um, Councilmember Bader, Zerlingo and Ryan are working on a commercial overlay in residential areas and more work to be done. You get, thank you for starting that. Um, we also have a mobile home overlay and Councilmembers Zerlingo, Vogel and myself are working on that. Um, as far as, uh, particular neighborhoods, um, and zoning, um, we have two neighborhoods that were, um, really involved in it. And then, uh, Councilmember Tully, Fossey and Bader, um, they've been, uh, they've been advising, including the Planning Director, um, Planner Director's Staff and the Mayor's Office have all been working with, um, a particular neighborhood in the North Everett, which most of you came here to speak about. And then also Councilmember Tully and myself and the mayor and the, and mayor's staff have been working on another neighborhood in, um, off Muckel Teal Boulevard. So we have two areas that we've been focusing on. Um, a couple of comments came up and I, really, this really isn't a dialogue between, those that come and speak in the council. I would like to say, but for my own neighborhood, it's always a challenge to notify, um, information that's going on the city. I can say that this, um, whole planning, um, process and developing comprehensive plan, a new one, really is mandated by a framework by the state of Washington. And then it's, uh, a big, as someone's mentioned, it is a, a big process. And actually this is not like what we've already decided. This is actually part of the process. Um, we have, we're not, this isn't the final decision today. Matter of fact, it's not going to be for at least another month and a half or so. So part of our process is getting feedback. And so that's why, um, we'd, we'd, um, have nailed down to those four different areas because of feedback from the neighbors. Um, I can say that, um, for the two neighborhoods, um, I'm, our goal is to have, um, some proposals here, some changes here in the next couple of weeks. And we'll have, um, a presentation on the 21st. So I'm looking forward to that and, um, I'm expecting some, some, some more adjustments as we go through this process and get feedback. So I'm optimistic that we can come up with some, some proposals that are going to, with all four of our issues that are going to be positive. So looking forward to that. So, and I want to thank the mayor's staff and the planning director for working very hard on those and, and all the council members too. So, um, I want to thank you, everyone here. And, um, also I'll remind that tomorrow night is an open house. I believe it might be our last one for the planning. And, and that's at the Senior Center at six o'clock. And so I'd really invite all of you to come there and that's where you want to have more one-on-one conversations with. I'll be there and some mayor's staff and the planning, um, group to be, attend that. And then you can have more one-on-one and correspond directly back and forth with. So it'll be a good, a good event. So I'll encourage you to, to attend there. So I'll leave it at that and, um, I'll start with that with my comments for tonight. I'll go with, um, Councilmember Zerlingo.
All right. Thank you, President Schwab. Uh, just one thing for me tonight. I'm part of a State Department of Transportation Working Group on, uh, State Route 525 improvements. This is something that most people call the Muckel Teal Speedway. It's the segment of the Muckel Teal Speedway and the small segment connecting that to the Muckel Teal Ferry Terminal, plus the bridge that we all know about over the railroad tracks in Old Town Muckel Teal. Um, mainly what I'm doing forever here is keeping an eye on things that affect Everett residents uh, as this intersects Muckel Teal Boulevard, which is mostly in Everett. And I'll note in relation to what was discussed earlier with respect to safety, this, uh, these new developments will promote better flow and safety for all users on the Speedway. Hopefully better intersections with, uh, the Boulevard, uh, funded by Move Ahead Washington. But, um, the kind of thing that's, they're consulting on now, this process is long. Uh, basically a year or so more from now figuring out the design. I think more than a year from now before the design will be complete. And I think that's a 2026, 27, 28 project. More, more to come. That's it. Thanks.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember Fossey.
Thank you, President Schwab. Uh, I appreciate the work that you're doing on coordinating everything. And thank you to all of our residents for showing up and, uh, really participating in this process as we're going through it. It is so helpful and, uh, very uplifting to see everyone so engaged in providing feedback. For anyone that, uh, was constrained by the three-minute rule, uh, please, uh, feel free to, uh, send in your comments. Um, we know, I know three minutes sometimes ends up being a little bit shorter than what are comments and the things that we want to say. So please do email in, um, because we read those as well. Um, but it, we have a plan going forward and I appreciate all the work being done on that. Um, the, I wanted to make note that the Marchlies Constitution Day Celebration is coming up this month. Uh, from May 23rd to 26th. Uh, it'll be at Jackson Park as well as they'll have some stuff over the Boys and Girls Club. That's always a really fun event. So make sure to check that out. Um, with, uh, regards to, uh, I want to say I appreciate the mayor and staff's response to the closure time, um, for the Edgewater Bridge and, um, looking at the feasibility of expediting the project timeline. So accelerating that, um, appreciate you being proactive on response on those things. Uh, other than that, happy Bike Month, everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember Bader.
Thanks, Council President. A real quick, uh, report, uh, regional council growth management. Uh, Policy Board was last month, or last week and, uh, I had a great presentation on, uh, missing middle housing. And no many of you have heard similar presentations, uh, just a couple of highlights on that, that, uh, ownership housing, uh, uh, they point out over the last two decades, uh, production of new ownership housing, uh, single-family mostly has really, has slumped significantly. And most of that housing that, that is now getting, or much of that housing now getting both much higher proportion is actually four bedrooms or more because it's so expensive to produce the, the housing. So people wanting those starter houses just aren't seeing those being built anymore. Uh, and intriguingly, uh, I think a lot of us have pinned our hopes on townhouses, uh, picking up some of the slack. But, uh, across the region, just really haven't seen a growth in that, uh, ownership housing. Also, uh, while rental housing has increased, uh, almost all that increase in the, uh, building rate of rental housing has been in, uh, studio and one-bedroom housing and two and three, there's one and studio and one-bedroom apartments and, and two and three-bedroom apartments. We haven't really seen an increase in the amount of building, uh, of, of, uh, rate of those. And just fascinating data. It's on the PSRC website if you want to go see the, uh, PowerPoint presentation. And also obviously we approved, uh, more comp plans for many other cities in, uh, in the region. And, uh, look forward to the day when we'll see, uh, City of Everett's comp plan coming across, uh, PSRC Growth Management. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan.
Great. Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, thank you so much for being here tonight and sharing. It's always great to see a neighborhood come together and band together. Uh, so thank you for, like, thank you for joining and like President Schwab mentioned, uh, this is perfect timing. This is when we are collecting public input. There, it is not a done deal. It's in draft form and it's, um, situations like this where we can gather the public's input and neighborhood, neighborhood input to make sure that the comp plan is right-sized and fits everybody's needs. So thank you for being here tonight. Uh, I did want to mention, uh, reiterate tomorrow's, uh, open house at the Carl Gibson Center, not the Senior Center, the Carl Gibson Center at 6:00 PM. Uh, staff's going to be on hand and they'll have plenty of, uh, maps and be available for questions for the public. On the, uh, staff also put together a really amazing website, EverettWa.gov, uh, slash 2044. My favorite part of the website is a interactive slide map where you can slide a little bar in between what's currently zoned and what the proposed zoning changes are. So for folks across the city, if you're curious how your neighborhood, uh, mayor, uh, will be changing because every neighborhood will be changing with the, with the, uh, with the comp plan update. Uh, please take a look and, uh, provide your feedback. Um, also on the site, uh, I did want to mention there's, uh, really great information going back to briefings that we had in 2022, uh, from, uh, staff on, uh, to gather input and what, uh, the timeline would be. So lots of great historical information as well. Uh, this upcoming Monday, um, oh, sorry, a couple more constituent, uh, mentions. Timothy, thank you for joining. I'm glad to hear, um, that you're doing well and that your needs are being met. Uh, I did want to share that there is an oversight committee that, uh, was put together with representatives from the neighborhood, from police, uh, from the city, from Compass, and I als, I believe also Housing Hope. And maybe the Downtown Everett Association, they meet monthly. They meet again on Monday or Tuesday. Um, so I'd be happy to pass along concerns or connect you with, uh, one of your neighbors who is on the committee so that you can be connected to make sure that your voice is, uh, being heard in that group as well. Uh, and also Tyler from the Port Gardner neighborhood, that same area. Uh, I've been working with him, uh, over a few emails, which I've also forwarded to administration. I know he's in contact with, uh, Lieutenant Fairchild as well. So hopefully we can get some resolution to his concerns. Speaking of Port Gardner, on Monday, Port Gardner Neighborhood Association's meeting at 7:00 PM. Hope to see you there. I believe we're back at the, uh, Resource Center at the School District again. And on Tuesday, uh, Glacier View has also a meeting as well. And, uh, this Sunday is opening day for the, uh, Everett Farmer's Market here on Wetmore. And I'll be ringing the opening bell, which I'm really thrilled about. So hope to see everybody there, uh, 10 o'clock. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Vogel.
Thank you and good evening, everybody. Uh, thank you very much for coming and speaking. I very much appreciate it. Just for all those who can't see very well anymore, nodding my head a lot, very much appreciate hearing your comments. Um, just before this meeting, I was in the Alliance for Housing Affordability and I wanted to bring forward to everybody, uh, here on council and administration that, uh, there is a change proposed and we're voting on it, um, June 4th at our next meeting. But, um, our program manager, Chris Collier, um, he can't keep all of the smarts and all of the every information that he needs in his one juicy brain. And so, um, uh, where his, Hasko has, um, I'm getting all these words wrong because I didn't write it down, but, uh, we found the problem that Chris can't be every person all the time. And so having a group behind him in the form of Hasko, um, and turning Chris into the Government Affairs Director, I believe, and taking, um, him out of the program manager title, it's basically a title change. Uh, dues from basic, from our cities and jurisdictions will remain the same. Uh, the meetings will remain essentially the same, uh, with Chris being the point of contact. Um, and we will actually, our jurisdiction, all of the cities will actually be able to get more information because it won't just be Chris, uh, any longer. It'll be Chris plus, um, or whoever takes over his spot when the inevitability happens of people moving on. So anyways, I just wanted to share with you that a change is coming and we're going to vote on it on, uh, next month. And if you have issues or want more and better information, please let me know. Um, and then this morning, I didn't think that, um, Brock was going to be here to tell you my story, but he was. And so I did ride my bike to Walter Hall for, um, the, to join the Homish County Transportation Coalition and sharing, we're sharing wheels for Ride Your Bike to School Day. And I was able to learn more about my bike and get my brakes working better than ever, but you all know that already. Um, on my way home, I stopped at, I stopped at the memorial for 13-year-old Emmy who, uh, died yesterday after that tragic accident, um, a few days ago. And, uh, it's devastating. It's literally like streets away. It's, it's, it's part of the community that I live and I walk and I bike in, um, every day. I walk to 7-Eleven with my, my own 10-year-old. Uh, so it's, um, I just want to put out that, yeah, I'm a part of that community too. I've probably seen Emmy, even though I don't know him, uh, you know, riding that bike or walking around or going to explore because that's my school, uh, that I live right next to. Um, anyways, I'm just putting out there that it was tragic and, um, biking should be safe and it was just like, there was, anyways, um, my heart and thoughts and feelings and good vibes and, um, all those things to his family and the people that knew him. I want to just share my support, um, and remember to be good to people out there because you don't know what they're going through. Thank you. That's all. No, one more thing. Um, there is, a LISC is having, uh, its first, uh, first South Everett Community Development Roundtable. And that meeting is happening at the Village on Casino Road, uh, which is 14 East Casino. Uh, Tuesday, May 13th from 3:00 to 4:30 PM. And it's a gathering that brings together leaders in government, housing and economic development to foster new partnerships, facilitate meaningful collaboration and support local businesses and increase economic vitality in South Everett. Speaking of that, I also went to the Latino Leti, L-E-T-I, Latino Education Training Institute, Cinco de Mayo Celebration on Cuatro de Mayo, uh, which I also rode my bike to. And that was a very good, um, community engagement opportunity that was free. And, uh, that is all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Tully.
Yeah, well, first I just want to thank everybody for coming and sharing, uh, the story of your neighborhood and, um, what's happening. Really, really appreciate it. Appreciate Neil and Glenda for making sure that their neighbors were aware. I know they were instrumental in that. And so thank you for that. It's so important. And thank you, Council President Schwab, for really explaining the process that we're in. So it's not done. It's not over. Uh, we're still working with the Planning Department on, uh, on how it's all going to look in the end. But we, we certainly understand your concern. So I just want you to know that. Um, and thank you again. Yes, it's a big deal to come here. Um, and just, uh, we did have the Community Health and Safety Council Committee meeting before council tonight. And Julie Willie and her team gave us an update on the opioid response and spending plans from, from our, our money that we're getting on the opioid, um, uh, uh, what did we get? Our money, the settlement. Thank you. Um, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. So moving on to administration report.
Yes, just, um, you have all commented on this, but maybe just to put one little fine point on it. The mayor's staff and the planning department are looking at options to reduce the density, um, that's proposed in the comp plan and the Legion Park and Waverly Skyline neighborhood for the neighbors who came tonight, as well as the, um, neighborhood at the end of Muckel Teal Boulevard. We won't have those firm specifics at that open house tomorrow night. Um, the staff will be there, so it is a great opportunity to talk with them and share more input. Um, we are aiming to have those new proposals ready for, uh, City Council presentation on May 21st. Uh, and then as Council President noted, the vote on the full comprehensive plan is scheduled for June 18th. So as some of you noted, we have, did I get it? I did, it's.
I hope you're wrong. Let me just say that. I hope it's the 11th.
It's not the 11th. It is the 18th.
Okay.
The public hearing is, um, slated to happen on the 11th. Um, we'll have, uh, so we'll have a briefing probably focused on these changes that are in place still on the 21st. And then the official briefing and first reading of the ordinance on June 4th. Public hearing on June 11th. It is different. It was earlier. Um, the big task, small staff and, uh, a lot of environmental documents. The big task, small staff and a lot of environmental documents to get filed and deadlines to meet. So the, the vote would be set for the June 18th date. And as Councilmember Ryan noted, it is several years in the making, so a lot of work to get, to get to this point. So, okay, I think that was it. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, our city attorney.
No report, no executive session, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, on to the consent items, one through five, because six, six has been moved to action items. So do I have motion?
I'll move, council, consent items one through five.
Councilmember Ryan, second.
Okay, motion and second's been made. Clerk, please take the roll.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Okay, moving on to items number seven, it's been read into the record, are there any questions? Item number seven. Okay, hearing none, moving to item number eight, it's been read in the record, are there any questions from council? Okay, moving on, the, both of them, the final reading would be May 14th. All right, so moving on to item number nine, first reading, Council Bill 2504-27, adopt an ordinance creating a special improvement project entitled Edgewater Creek Bridge Replacement Fund 03303, Program 115, to accumulate all costs for the improvement and replacement of ordinance number 4072-25, third and final reading, 52125. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to a briefing and proposed action item from, or item number 10, Council Bill 2504-28, first reading, adopt an ordinance relating to utilization of apprentices of public works construction projects, adding a new section to chapter 3.80 EMC, third and final reading, May 21st, 2025.
Just a short briefing, hopefully. So this ordinance will strengthen our city's investment in workforce development and apprenticeships on public works construction projects. Everett's had a longstanding commitment to using apprenticeship labor on city projects. Since 2003, we've required 15% apprentice labor hours on city buildings over a million. And in 2019, council reinforced that commitment through a resolution that, and that we've successfully applied that on other city facility projects. This ordinance expands our existing policy beyond just buildings and it sets a clear and earlier schedule for applying, applying utilization requirements that speeds things up beyond what the state has already put into place. So it applies the current state required 15% apprenticeship requirement to projects over one and a half million starting July 26, July 1st, 2026. Expends, expands that further to all projects over a million dollars by July 1st, 2027. So that's the kind of the acceleration there, an extra year in advance of the state requirement. This is great for our strong diverse local construction workforce, helps address the shortage of skilled labor over the long term. And it also has some accountability measures, so there's good clear definitions in it. A tool for accountability for contractors who don't engage in good faith efforts could be deemed non-responsive on future bids. And it also has annual reporting to council to make sure that we're tracking how we're doing by project contractor trade demographic categories, including women, minorities, veterans and Everett residents. And scheduled for third reading on May 21st. And we have done lots of outreach over the last 18 months and specifically on the labor side with the County Trades Council, Unilaaborers, carpenters, as well as business folks and our own public work staff who have their own expertise in managing projects, so.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Zarlingo?
Well, one quick one, I, in earlier years, I worked a few months as a carpentry laborer and a few months also as an electrical laborer, but without an apprenticeship program. I realize now, as I've learned more about apprenticeships, I didn't have the guidance, I didn't have the supervision, I didn't have the chance to learn. And maybe most importantly, when I look back at what I did, I didn't have the protections of an apprenticeship program in terms of safety. There are things that I did that I wouldn't do today that I know smarter, more educated people would do. I'm happy I survived that. So I guess I want to offer my, my strong support for apprenticeship programs because not only are we developing the skills, but we're, we're ensuring the, the long-term health and safety. These, these jobs are hard on your body over the years and we don't want to make them any harder or more dangerous than they need to be. So thanks to, to the unions worked on this, to our city staff and to people I don't even know who've worked on this to make this happen over the past several years.
Any other questions? Councilmember Ryan?
Great, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your hard work on this. It's been in the works for a long time and a lot of fine tuning. I'm really thrilled to see it come forward today. I had a few clarifying questions I wanted to ask about, because I'd also worked on the apprenticeship utilization ordinance at the county, so have a, I've gone through the wringer on this already. So one of the concerns that we, that came up during the work that we did at the county was how to apply the 15% rate across different trades and crafts that are participating in the project. The way that it's written here, it says that it's 15% for the whole project. So I just wanted to clarify if some of the pre-construction plans would require the, every trade to have the minimum of 15% or if it's total project hours regardless of craft would be 15% total.
It is total project hours. There are some exemptions for folks that wouldn't normally be considered sort of in an apprentice pool, like supervisors and, and forepersons. But there is reporting of the number of apprentices by trade and craft. So there is an opportunity that in the future, if we find that this isn't kind of delivering on what one would expect, like all the apprenticeships are in one trade and none are in another, then I think we'd have a chance to refine it.
Great. Thank you. Speaking of the adjustments on number five there, the 5A talks about demonstrated lack of availability of apprentices in the specific geographic area of the project. So what measurement are we using for specific geographic area?
It would be the director's determination. I would anticipate that the same, the similar ordinances we've looked at are often looking at like a countywide geography.
Okay. And then same, that same section for C, that's curious about the threshold that would be used to determine if a project has a disproportionately high ratio of material cost to labor hours.
Oh, we talked about this a lot, like a long time ago, in my brain, maybe like 18 months ago. I feel like that the ratio, like the tipping point of where it doesn't make as much sense is something that I feel like I'm not going to be able to remember right now. So I'll have to find out what, kind of what the common, what that common tipping point is.
Okay, great. And I'm sure it could vary depending on projects. I wouldn't want to necessarily codify something that wouldn't be universally applied. And then I'm glad to see, under reporting, I'm glad to see that the, the after the fact reports include the numbers and percentages of minority women and veterans utilized as apprentices, apprentices on each project. But I was curious why we wouldn't be front-loading the whole process with goals for apprenticeship utilizations in these categories.
I think we were balancing concerns about project size, apprenticeship availability, the ability of smaller businesses to stand up programs and be successful in bidding on these projects. There were really specific targets, so sort of a compromise to introduce it and with the reporting to give us the ability to say that it's not achieving the goals that one would have expected or that, or hopefully that it is.
So, great, okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. And we have a speaker. Thank you.
Hi, if you can state your full name and city of residence and you have three minutes to speak.
All right. Don't I even have to push the button?
You're good.
Look at that. Hi, my name is Seth Newsom, I live in the Westmont neighborhood of Everett, Washington. I'm here to thank the mayor and the city council for, for pitting this on today's agenda as far as the apprenticeship utilization. As many as you know and as many of you as that's been working on this, and for the folks that are in the room that are apprentices, by expanding these requirements to include all city projects over 1.5 million by 2026 and by 1 million, or and 1 million by 2027, not only are you accelerating progress and creating meaningful, meaningful opportunities for apprentices working in Everett now, but more importantly, tomorrow. And, and I can't thank this body enough for the work that they put into it before I even met some of you folks. So just thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all we have for public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to action item number six, authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Northwest Innovation Resource Center to provide business support services from 2025 to 2027. Do I have a staff report? Oh, I do, thank you.
Hello, it's Dan Ernesti, Economic Development Director, and I'm responsible for the oversight of this professional service agreement with Northwest Innovation Resource Center. They have been under contract with the city to provide business services for longer than I've been here in the city of Everett and have faithfully provided really complimentary services to what the city provides, as well as what Economic Alliance and Greater Seattle Partners and now the Greater Everett Chamber provide. And so the three-year contracts, $24,000 a year, currently they have a lease for space in the, the Edward Hansen Conference Center, part of the arena, right next to the, the, the management offices there, and they perform workshops and so forth. Their real key is to help entrepreneurs before they, before they launch a business. In a sense, we have a different entrepreneurial mix in Snohomish County from King County. A lot of the entrepreneurs in King County are tech-oriented and in Everett, they're more, I'll just say manufactured oriented or, you know, gadgets, specific products to fill niches. And Northwest Innovation Resource Center is particularly gifted at helping those, bring those products to market and, and get them through. In addition, they work with workforce, workforce, workforce support for displaced workers and were really instrumental in one of the projects that you might remember that we helped them launch was the Data Boot Camp, which is, teaches data analytics during the pandemic. That was one that was really, really useful for a lot of, a lot of students and it continues on now self-sustaining. So Diane Camianca is the executive director and I believe she is on Zoom somewhere if, if you have any questions for her, but I'm just here to answer any other questions. I did provide a memo to the council with some of the answers to some of the different questions, but happy to restate any of those answers now or take it from there.
Any questions on council? Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, thanks, Dan. Thanks Diane for being here too. And thanks for the, the memo that was provided earlier today and for the update, it's very helpful information. I, I mean, there's no doubt that, and work's doing really amazing work in the community and providing a vital service for that, you know, first stepping stone for an entrepreneur to take their dream and turn it into a business plan. And I absolutely recognize the great work that they're doing in Everett. My concern with the renewal is twofold. First, taking into consideration how tight our budget is right now and we need to be watching every penny we spend. I'm seeing this contract as duplicating services that should be provided other, under other area economic development agencies or another ADO. And it's because of these other opportunities that could be available that I'm not convinced that the city should be the conduit in this role anymore. And even though what's not, before us today doesn't include the lease at the facility, I'm glad to see they're there. I just wanted to float out there that I've been concerned about the lack of utilization of that first floor space along Hewitt over the past few years and would like to reconsider what might be the best and highest use for that space. I know there's interest from the rink to you, to activate the space and I would support, you know, the chamber moving in there. I know it used to be the Experience Everett headquarters for a long time for tourism. So I think there's a lot of opportunities and willing partners to better activate that space and it'd be great to see the lights on again as well. So I'm not, I guess I'd like to hear a little bit more about why it should be the city in this role when we have ADOs and we have the chamber and we have the Economic Alliance Snohomish County that, that provide services that are similar and could be helping in that space and like, why should it be the city at this point still?
The investment that the city makes is relatively small. It's the, as I said in the memo, the rent that they pay in our space exceeds the amount of the contract, support contract that we give them by $6,000 a year. I think it's, I, I mean, you, you raise an excellent point, where does the city come in? And I think there are several organizations like Economic Alliance, Greater Seattle Partners and so forth that we, we do support. And we do that, I think, because we have historically believed that the taxpayers of the city of Everett are served by these organizations in a unique way that adds to the overall economic development network and, and business support system. They, obviously, what we provide, Northwest Innovation Resource Center, doesn't come close to being their whole budget. It's a small portion, but it is a recognition of the service. And it also is, I, I think, buying influence to, to influence their programs to emphasize the residents of Everett and the businesses of Everett. So long answer, not terribly satisfactory probably for everyone, but I, I think that's just, it is a, it is a tight budget that we're operating under and that's why, you know, it's my budget that, that we're working with and I believe it's a, it's an excellent use of, of that money.
And I'll just add, you know, we have a, part of the, the, one of the best things we can do to address our structural budget deficit, to, to grow our city is to ensure a robust economic development program and that the businesses have all the resources they need to grow and thrive. Dan Ernesti, as our Economic Development Director, can't do all of those things. We work in partnership with a large number of organizations and each one of them kind of serves a different purpose from like Greater Seattle Partners, that's like recruiting, you know, big, you know, organizations from overseas and trying to bring them anywhere in the, you know, Pacific Northwest region. Economic Alliance is, is kind of countywide economic development organization. They also do some advocacy work and their goal is to work in partnership with Greater Seattle Partners when they're trying to recruit those big companies too. Then they can target the areas of Snohomish County where they belong. And so it's a kind of a deeper layer. As you all know, we formed our Everett Chamber because we wanted something really Everett-specific that has been missing since our, our chamber went away years ago. And, and I'm excited to see the, you know, the growing, you know, interest and, and vitality that's coming out of that chamber. Northwest Innovation Resource Center is, is, really fills a different niche. It's, you know, when, when someone has an idea or they want to do something and they just need the extra supports and resources to figure that out, those other agencies don't fit it. Now, could this organization fit neatly into one of those, perhaps? The, right now, it doesn't. And so, because we have always, you know, at least for the last, you know, decade or or more, focused on making Everett a place where businesses can make it, where they can start a business and grow and thrive. This has been a really important resource to help some of those small businesses pop up. And once they get through that program, they might become a member of the chamber or they might become, you know, or they might become, you know, part of one of those other larger agencies. But this is kind of more of a startup and inventor and entrepreneur space, I guess. But they all link together. They don't duplicate, they complement. But it is complicated, and, you know, I think it's, we're better served by having these outside organizations. Otherwise, I'd have to hire a whole team of staff to do that work, and that's not feasible, right? We don't have the resources to do that. By supporting each of these organizations, they focus on that part of Everett that we have heard repeatedly, our businesses and up-and-coming newcomers need, so.
If I can riff on that, when the mayor was speaking, it gave me time to think about that a little bit more too. I think the thing that I really appreciate about Northwest Innovation Resource Center is it comes from a market side, and it works with a lot of workforce Snohomish, Washington State, Everett Community College, different partners who really are coming from either an academic or a, you know, almost social service workforce side. And they, they bring a sensibility that's really positive to bringing a product to market, to bring a, to emerging workforce trends. A I is the program they just launched, but data analytics was just the right program at the right time. And they're really keen on that, and I think that's what they provide really well in that whole, in that whole network. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Ryan, did you have?
Yeah, just to follow up, like I prefaced all my comments with, like, I think N Works is doing a really amazing job to fill that niche, and it's, it is a critical service that they're providing to the community and the multiplier effect that their services provide on our larger economic development, I think, are essential. I have concerns that when we're other, when we're cutting other parts of our budget that are also multipliers, like our arts programs, that I would just like to make sure we're the right conduit for this contract. And so I'm not convinced yet that we are. I think that it would be worth exploring if the Chamber would be willing to hop in, if the Economic Alliance of Snohomish County would like to hop in. We pay a lot of dues to both those organizations and provide the seed money for them. So I'd like to make a motion to table for one week to work with local stakeholders to see if there's an alternative path forward.
I'll second that.
Well, it's a consent item. I'll just, I'll just rule that it's already on the agenda item. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move item number six.
Okay, okay, so we have it on the, on the table. And now there's been a motion to table it for one week, and there's second, so clerk, please take the roll.
Vice Presidents Arlingo?
No.
Councilmember Fosse?
Excused.
Councilmember Bader?
No.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli?
Yes.
Councilmember Tuie?
Yes.
President Schwab?
No.
So we have a, so the motion failed. Okay, so it's still on the table. So any more questions or comments? Councilmembers Arlingo, but.
There we go. Green, just one quick question. Do you feel, do you feel that the presence of this, that our support of this and the presence of this increases the chances that these new businesses will locate here in Everett?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bader?
Councilmember Ryan, I think raised some good points and good questions, but given the timeframe, I'd like to explore this over the next year or two during the time of this contract to see if those can be, those ideas can be implemented. But at this point, I'd like, I personally like to go forward with renewing the contract right now.
Yeah, one more comment. I've been going to several of the Chamber of Commerce meetings, and my sense of their work right now is that they are trying to get more membership, more people involved. And their focus is, for now, so thoroughly on growing the Chamber that their ability to integrate a different organization who's got a different mission may not be the best time for that, although I would support taking another look at this in the future because that, in a year or so, for example, it may be a really good time to be asking Wendy and the rest of the Chamber, is that something they would want to integrate or take on?
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Councilor Tuie?
Just real quick, yeah, I agree that, you know, a lot of the programs that we support, we just need to look at all the time for the funding piece of it. You know, we need the programming. I think over time, if we can look at some of the options that Council Ryan brought up, would be great.
Okay, all right. No further comment. Clerk, please take the roll.
Vice President Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Excuse.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli?
Yes.
Councilmember Tuie?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Okay, with no further business?
Can I add one thing? I will speak to them about the lease on the Hewitt space. That's a different issue, but yeah.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.